And with the Muscatine Community School District, I work with middle schoolers and high schoolers. Um, so our program kind of starts um with this program called Salir Adelante. It's a six-week session where we invite Latino students and their families. Um, it begins in seventh grade, that's the year that they can do it. And um, we invite them once a week for six weeks to attend these sessions where we provide a meal for them as well as childcare, just to make it easier for them. Um, throughout these sessions, they learn about topics such as family values, career, learning about the American school system, college financing, their hopes and dreams, and then a celebration at the end. Um, just this past year, we have had seven families graduate from that program. And we already have three families who are interested in doing the next one that we hold. And with these students already participating at our summer meetings as well as already doing volunteer opportunities, so I'm just inspired. These are middle school students already giving back and being involved in their community. Once students graduate that program, they then can join our Unidos 4-H Club, which the Salir Adelante program, you um, they go on, it's like a roadmap to the 4-H Club. You don't have to necessarily do that program to be involved in our club. Um, the number of youth we've reached out to this year is about sixty-five. During the school year, I go in during musky time and help students with homework, scholarships, as well as bringing guest speakers. Um, I have brought in Ms. Calderon to talk about the Seal of Violet literacy as well as a former MHS graduate to talk about his experience being a first-generation college student at the University of Iowa. During the school year, we host weekly meetings after school. And we have these meetings at the classroom where I go in during musky time, but thankfully, we've been growing. We have about thirty students attend our meetings consistently, so we've had to move to the commons. During the summer, our meetings move to the Iowa State Extension Office where we have around fifteen students coming in consistently. Right now, they've been working on fair projects and working on communication for communication skills for these projects as well as tending to a garden. A shared goal that I have with the previous coordinator is that we hope to have as many volunteer opportunities as possible for these students that by the time that they become seniors, whether they realize it or not, they may have earned the Silver Court Hour. Um, I like to take the extra step during musky time or during club meetings to actually guide them through the process, just to make sure that those hours are actually submitted. Some things we volunteered at recently are the United Way Day of Caring, the Master Gardener Cleanup Day at the Muscatine Fairgrounds, as well as a Library Luchador event where Latin Thunder even gave us our own luchador mask just as a thank you for helping out. An important piece of this program is college visits. Um, recently, I went to Iowa State to the College of Design Middle School Day where the middle schoolers, they learned about virtual reality, architecture, and just got a chance to visit a school that they may not really get to visit because it's on the other side of the state. And then recently, during a club meeting, we attended a tour at Muscatine Community College where students were able to use the police simulator and take a look at all the nursing equipment there. And hopefully, soon we'll have a trip to Loris College. Um, something that's really important to us is to not only have students involved, but also their families, the parents, so we try to regularly host family nights. I just held my first family night back in May with the emphasis of celebrating the recent high school graduates as well as inviting other families who are interested in our program. With the help of my assistant, Belen Medina, we reached a record number of seventy people attending our family night. Um, some families there shared their experiences, why they keep coming to our club, to our events, um, just in case the interested families were wondering. And um, one mom, she shared a very heartfelt story, but it started off with, "Thank you to all of you because my son has found a place where he feels he belongs." Something exciting that we've recently gotten to do is called Ripple Effect Mapping, which is a new evaluation tool that is facilitated by Iowa State Campus Staff. We invited families to come to our office. We separated students and parents. And this was just really a way for them to tell their stories, their experiences about the club and how that has affected their life, not only in school, but maybe um, outside factors as well. Um, some, one family shared, "My sister went through the program and that convinced me to go back to school." And another family shared, "I thought I was alone, but I learned that other families are in the same boat." This helps us find other families and helps support all. Some common themes that were found through this event were a sense of unity, uh, improved self-esteem, a sense of belonging, and open opportunities. This data was collected with the help of United Way. In twenty-twenty-two, we had a one-hundred percent graduation rate. With students, maybe they didn't graduate with their class, but they did go back and receive um, their degree. So this just shows that we're helping students really understand the importance of a degree and their education. Um, once students graduate our program, if they go to MCC, they have the option of joining MCC Lulac, which I'm the advisor of, so there I can continue helping them in their college education. We also recently just hosted a Lotteria Night at the high school to just kind of get the word out about our club. We have raised this past year a thousand dollars for scholarships. And as well as along with other students, Lulac students, I have attended Lulac National Conferences in DC and Las Vegas, which just helps us learn more about the Latino community, what is going on in other places, and how we can relate that back to our community. And now I have a couple of students from our club who are gonna talk about things that they've done recently, so guys, hold on.
Um, I'm Emmanuel Ariana Moya. I'm in, what is it, junior year? Um, I've been in this club for a pretty long time, since eighth grade or around seventh grade. It's really helped me out too, but the couple of stuff we've done is we've done for the luchador thing at the library. We helped out making flowers for some of the kids, and they even gave us this cool mask, which we all took pictures of, not that much. Um, it really was fun though, just helping out the kids and seeing them smile. And I really enjoyed doing that. Another thing that I've been a part of is the gardening club, which is something we do after club or just in a spare time. And we just kind of garden and like plant and stuff, but it's pretty fun to do because it gives us like something to do over the summer and stuff, just doing nothing. So that's kind of my experience.
Um, thank you so much for listening. Any questions?
Yes. You mentioned several times about the garden club. Where do you actually have this garden?
Um, we, outside the Iowa State Extension Office, we have a little plot where they go out and after club meetings, it's really easy to just go out there and water them.
Any other question for them? What?
Probably haven't had to water too much this year.
Have you had to water too much?
Not that much. They have their own sprinklers. It helps out.
So what do you plan on doing with the harvest?
We're just gonna keep them or eat them. We have some tomatoes out, but not that many. We have more flowers and more vegetables, kind of.
Thank you. It's very, very nice. I'd like to see what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for bringing your group here. Thank you. It's just hearing, you know, all these effects on the new generation, the students, is extremely important, so thank you. Keep up with the good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
So the second item under board targets, goals report, is Muscatine. Schools will utilize resources effectively and equitably. Under this item, we don't have any presentation. And the third item, students will learn in a positive and supportive environment. And we do have two items under that. The first one is the Align Impact Muscatine County AIM Presentation. With Kim, please.
Hi, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kim Warren. I'm the Director of Align Impact Muscatine County. Catherine and I did not know that we both were presenting today till we were at a meeting together at nine AM, but I love it because I think it shows how great our community works together, that we're both gonna be referencing each other in our presentations. If you can go to the next slide. Oh, I have it. Oh, my gosh. Wrong meeting. Thanks. Sorry. Um, so just a little bit about AIM. So AIM's mission is to align community resources and identify effective practices for implementation to reduce achievement gaps and improve outcomes for all students and families. AIM was actually started by a grant from Iowa College Aid in twenty-sixteen, only included the Muscatine School District, and then we expanded county-wide in twenty-eighteen. Uh, we have four main goals: that every child enters kindergarten ready to learn; that children succeed academically through supports in and out of school; that every child graduates from high school prepared for post-secondary education or career training; and every adult has the education, train, and skills to obtain a career that can sustain a family. AIM is very unique in the fact that we are governed by a sixteen-person leadership council um, of all different sectors of the community, so MCC, the different school districts, businesses, nonprofits, local government organizations. So United Way is our fiscal agent and employer of record, but we are governed separately from and funded separately through braided funding than the United Way Board, um, which tends to get confusing, but most grant things are. So I'm gonna go through today what the main partnerships we've had with the school district over the past year. I'm gonna focus on the past twelve months because we don't have all night, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. So in the areas of kindergarten readiness, um, we've really been focused on preschool access. We developed in partnership with um, the Muscatine School District, the private preschools, uh, Muscatine Charities, Early Childhood Iowa, Muscatine County, um, and non-emergency medical transport to start the preschool transportation program. Pre-COVID transportation was the biggest issue that parents said for why they couldn't have their children attending preschool, um, and that system of scholarships and access is still being utilized today and funded mostly through Early Childhood Iowa and Muscatine charities. Another thing we focus on is childcare access. Um, our nation, state, and community is really in a childcare crisis. Um, it's kind of a constant, complex issue, um, but when different organizations wanna get together to maybe access state funding, um, or work on different things, then we tend to be the facilitator of those meetings and help shepherd those processes along. And what we've done now is we are really focused on having parent conversations because we know what is holding children back from being ready in kindergarten is very different and complex post-COVID. And we really think the only way that we can address that is by talking to families. So we're starting to hear things about, um, parents really want more information about where their kids should be developmentally, get more information, other than kind of the once a year, once every six months, doctor's appointment, stuff like that. So we're just at the beginning of that sort of work. Um, but I think everyone in the room knows how important it is for students to be ready when they enter kindergarten. So another thing that we really feel like the community is poised to help the school district with is really reduce that experience gap. We know students of means tend to get experiences at museums, day camps, extracurricular activities that really build their background knowledge. Students who have background knowledge tend to have better comprehension in literacy, do well in school, so we've really been working on that. So over the past year, we have planned twenty-nine unique experiences, bringing in community organizations into the elementary schools that align with their curriculum, um, be it their ELA curriculum, their social studies curriculum, their science curriculum. There, we organized about three to four per grade level this year, and that was, for the most part, uniform at each school, each grade level across the district. Um, we utilized fourteen community partners, ISU was one of them, for those activities to be in the classroom, and that reached two thousand one hundred and eight students. The idea of doing this was really birthed out of Spark. So when the school district decided to expand and reimagine what summer school could be, they asked us to help think about um, how we could help students get those extra enrichment experiences. It's one of the best practices for summer learning. And so this summer, we've been able to organize over thirty-five unique experiences with over twenty community partners, and that impacts about four hundred students. And I asked Candy and Corey if they would just kind of say a few words from their perspective about how um, the partnership's been working during the school year and during the summer.
In the interest of time, I'll go ahead. Yeah. So I've had the opportunity to work uh, with Kim and Candy at Spark for the last several years. It's a super impactful program. Uh, we have, uh, we hosted at Jefferson Elementary, so thanks to Candy and her staff for the wonderful job they do preparing the building and opening their doors, allowing us to come into the facility and to coordinate this camp. But thanks to Kim for all of her efforts in making these community partnerships. But uh, you know, one of the most positive things that I see is every morning, students getting off the bus, getting out of cars, and running into the building to come in to figure out what they're going to do that day. And that's just something that you don't see every day. So uh, seeing that excitement, that enthusiasm for learning, and they're having fun, uh, you know, getting to know students from across the district. We have students from all over uh, our community, coming to share and learn together and work with people that they're going to encounter out in our community. So it's been a really fantastic opportunity to see our students grow through that experience.
And I would just say a week and a half ago, if you'd have came down Mulberry, we have all kinds of construction. They've closed off Cedar. We have a detour in the front, and you would have seen MPW open up the fire hydrant and kids running and screaming all through the road, you know? So it's a little bit chaotic, but just so fun, and the kids are getting a lot out of it. And you think of the kids that have been doing this, you know, three or four years now, just what an impact it's had. So it's, Kim has just done an outstanding job of putting together just really fun experiences that the kids probably just would not have otherwise, so we're very appreciative.
Um, one thing I did wanna know about the enrichment experiences during the school year is the biggest challenge that we probably have is having, when the teachers deliver the unit lineup, when the community organizations are available, and I just wanna give a shout out to the teachers because for, the vast majority of them are able to roll with it, um, especially the snow days. Those wreaked havoc. Every time there was uh, a late start or um, no, no school because of weather, we had probably two different things planned. Um, so the teaching staff has been great, just kind of rolling with it, and the principals supporting the program, um, because else it really wouldn't be possible. So then we do a lot of work um, with Muscatine High School. Iowa College Aid has a program called Course to College that the high school implements. Um, there's five steps, and we secure the extra funding for all the events and supplies and manage the funds for Muscatine and West Liberty High School for the Course to College program. Prepare is really the students getting an idea of where they want to go through different career exploration activities. We always hope that those enrichment opportunities that we're bringing to them, K-6 and at Spark, are also starting to plant the seeds of very early career exploration. Apply is, I'm sure some of you have seen um, the videos and pictures of the Applied to College Day. I think the top right photo is a group of students that during one of um, the assistance periods all applied to MCC. So um, we help support that. Sometimes with staffing, usually we help staff some of it um, in case the counselors get busy, and then also. and then also, again, any supplies or anything for that. Finance is really FAFSA, which has been a disaster this year. We've all really had to band together to get that figured out with all the delays and the challenges. Decide is thinking about students, you know, accepting their letters, their student aid offers, or, you know, deciding what sort of technical college or career training they wanna go into. And then, GO really happens during the summer. That's making sure that students who intend to go on to some sort of post-secondary education or training actually show up somewhere in the fall. Depending on the graduating class, 10 or more percent of them who intend to go on do not show up anywhere in the fall. So, we worked with the school districts and the county, ISU Extension Outreach and MCC to develop the Summer Melt Program a few years ago. We heard from students, no one was around to help them during the summer. If they got pulled for FAFSA verification, or if they hadn't applied for college yet and just were clueless what to do, there's no one around to help them. So, we've been supporting that through the Summer Melt Program where students can get all of those sort of assistances. Catherine is one of our mentors. Jacenia Pessina, who works part-time in our office, is a mentor. They're both bilingual. They've both been a part of the education community here, MHS, MCC. Jacenia has now transferred to the University of Iowa. So, that near-peer mentorship we see as being very beneficial to students. They're more likely to ask a near-peer for help than someone who's the same age as their mom. So, that's what we do with the high school. We also host annually the Post-Secondary Workshop, something that when we would meet with, as ISU Extension, MCC, and the different high school counselors, was that we were looking at data and trying to develop strategies without really having everyone in the room. So, annually, we look at a lot of data. We bring together just all different levels of administration and staff within the districts. We bring both districts together. They really like being able to talk about different ideas together. A lot of different staff from MCC, and then we bring in community partners. So, ISU Extension was at the table. And then, also, this year, we brought in businesses because they're the ones hiring. They're the ones who know what sort of education and training is needed and coming ahead. And then, we kind of set our agenda for what that group is gonna work on kind of above and beyond the Course to College for the next year from that meeting. And we just held that in May. I do not expect you to understand anything that's on this slide. This slide is just to show you the complexity of the county shared data system that we were working on implementing. Mindy Hoon is our data manager. She has the patience of a preschool teacher. She used to be B1. I think hiring a former preschool teacher as a data manager was probably one of the best hiring decisions I ever made because you need a lot of patience to try and get three school districts' community data together with 20-some community partners and have it all make sense. So, we are just about done getting multiple years of all three school districts uniformly cleaned and being able to run reports into the system. FAST goes in there, ISAPs goes in there, attendance goes in there, transcripts goes in there. Just about anything goes in. When it comes out, it's in aggregate. So, like, I can't go into the system and find out anything about an individual student. The N has to be a certain size, has to be 10 or more students, that sort of thing. But we're really, as a community, getting to the point where we're really poised to be able to see what's working and what can be scaled and starting to make better decisions based on data as a community in the best interest of students and families, and that's really exciting. So, like I said, that is just to show you the complexity of what Mindy and everyone at the three school districts and our community partners are dealing with. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Kim, first of all, thank you. I mean, I think tonight, we are witnessing amazing programs that we have and are part of our district. I mean, from first, the first program, and you also. So, thank you for everything that you are doing, and if, yeah, please.
Yep. Yes, I agree with John and all of it. It's been nice to hear positive things happening. But my question with you, Kim, is when you were talking about that Course to College and then got into the summer program part of it, when do they start that? Is it just right at the beginning of their senior year? Are you talking to them when they're a junior? Because how much lead time do they need to get themselves ready?
Right, yeah. The counselors within the high school are really getting information out earlier, right? I mean, really starting to hit with those key concepts of like FAFSA and applying junior year, things like that. Obviously, with Brandon Welsh's position at the high school, with the work-based learning stuff, kids are getting exposure and ideas a lot earlier. My son's a freshman and went on a job shadow because he was adamant about what he was gonna do and what classes he wanted to take, and it was nice to have him go see it and do it and feel a little more confident in what he was taking and saying he wants to do. So, I think it's even starting earlier and earlier with some of the different, more innovative things that high school's been doing.
Any other question? Thank you, Kim. Great presentation. Thank you.
And John, just a couple of comments. I think, you know, again, both programs, we're very fortunate to have them here. And it's really about making connections for our students, both human connections, but also to resources, activities, and opportunities because we know that enhances learning. And as you heard all these different pieces, we also know the more kids have opportunities to connect to these different programs, the more successful they're going to be. So, as we're looking at those data systems, we're looking at, you know, some of these kids who've had success, they're in two or three of these things, right? So, how do, and then that allows us to communicate that more. But again, we're very fortunate. We have a very giving community that wants to help and wants to be there, but you gotta ask them, right? And so, having somebody like Kim who can be out there, kind of building some of those resources and aligning that, working with our teachers, getting those either out, out to those experiences, or bringing those people in to work with our students. We're just very fortunate for all of that work. We're seeing that impact in Spark. That was so successful, you know, the question was, why can't we do this for all kids across the school year? And it continued to expand. And so, Kim's done a great job of kind of pulling those resources, expanding that, aligning it to where it needs to be with what we're doing in the classroom. So, really appreciate all the work there.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. So, moving forward, our next item under item C is the Multi-tiered System of Support, MTSS, with Joelle and Becky.
Yes. So, good evening. Joelle and I are both here, but we also have a large audience over here, too. So, this evening, you will be hearing from our teachers and possibly our principals as well. So, we held an event way back on June 3rd and 4th, which seems like a long time ago, but really, it wasn't. So, this evening, we just wanted to share with you on what took place during those two days on June 3rd and 4th. So, it was, the formal title was an MTSS Strategic Planning Event. This evening, you'll be hearing from people that are representing each of our schools, and they will be sharing their highlights, their takeaways, and maybe some next steps that they left with on, to take back to their building. So, the outcomes for June 3rd and 4th, as you can see, we have nine outcomes. So, understanding the framework of MTSS Systems of Support, defining roles and the purpose of MTSS teams within the framework, also, creating a systematic framework for student support teams that would service our district PK through 12, establishing purposes and processes for Data Days, understanding core instructional practices that relate to instruction and environment. Also, the teams engaged in the SAME scoring process, and SAME stands for Self-Assessment of MTSS Implementation. This survey, buildings look at their data, and they score themselves. This is part of the ESSA designations that buildings need to go through on an annual basis. Then, there was time to look at building data from this last year that we just completed to look at results, and they could update their CSIP goals on their results from this past year. And then, looking ahead for next year, or this coming up year in '24, '25, and aligning it with professional development and the needs that they have at their building. And then, obviously, the last outcome is to share what happened during the two days with over 80 people that we had in this, in this room, to share with all the other staff members back at the buildings, which we created a slide deck presentation that they will be sharing with their staff that will take place on August 16th, which is on one of our Teacher in Service Days. Time was embedded for building teams to strategically look at currently, at current practices and current systems within their buildings, and then process what all of this information was, and then realigning it to an MTSS framework. So, all building principals attended. They identified teams of teachers that came to this room. Obviously, the outcome, we had nine, but I think maybe after listening to some of our teachers and our building principals speak, I think there was some more outcomes that happened that was exciting to hear about as well. You have a participant packet that is on your, on your table to look at. So, this was created specifically internally for these two days of learning. So, the goal was to have a clear understanding for all building teams to strategically look at our current systems and our overall MTSS practices. So, we're not gonna go through this 35-page packet, but you can kind of see how the days unfolded and what the agenda was and what building teams all, all went through.
So, I'm just gonna cover briefly. This is the framework that we all focused on for an MTSS system. And although it looks simple, it is, can be, complex when you're looking at creating the structure within a building. And then, the other part of the work that we did around this was just, was aligning so that we created a system that had equity for all students. So, regardless of the school that you attend, you know, one of our goals is to ensure that all students get the support that they need and teachers when we're working each day. So, this framework here is focused on an MTSS system. And I'm basically going to just kind of go quickly through the different teams and their purposes. And then, we're going to let the teachers and principals share a little bit more in depth about the work. So, the first team that you see on there is a building leadership team. And so, we, obviously, each school will have a building leadership team. That BLT team is a representative and engaged team that leads the building CSIP plan. So, like, the goals that the building sets for students, that team oversees that work. They also are an oversight group to the instruction team and the environment team. The instruction team is a team that's focused on the academic goals, and their work is to really improve academic outcomes for all students. The, that team would also be focused on our core instructional practices and then looking at the needs for professional development within that building. The environment team is a team that uses building-wide social, emotional, and behavior data to determine the needs that students may have around social, emotional, behavioral outcomes. And that team is focused on those goal areas. And then, we have a student support team in every building. And this is an area, as we kind of started really kind of processing and working through these structures, this is an area that we will continue to work on throughout this school year. And really, in a student support team, they're really focused on looking at students that may need extra help in either academics, behavior, or attendance. And that's the main focus of this team. And when we kind of worked through this as a group, one of the things that we wanna continue, keep working on is looking at that process and how kids come through those supports.
And our last team is our Special Education Team. So, these teams are comprised of our special education teachers, our administrators, our AEA. And basically, this is a team that meets bi-weekly, and it gives, it looks at review student data and for all of those students that are receiving support services and through their IEP. And the purpose is to ensure that all students with IEPs are receiving the services and supports that are outlined within their specific education plan. So, this is just gonna be a time of reflection. So, I'm gonna have all of our guests, thank you for coming and taking time out of your July 8th evening. They are just gonna share, in random order, their thoughts on the two days and anything that they would like to share with the board because this is something that we have, we have never done before. So.
If you speak first, you're done first. So, I am right here. What I appreciated about this time was we had an extended period of time to reflect on our current practices and how we were achieving our goals versus best practices. And were they coinciding, or were there some, some things that we can do better or add? Maybe we weren't doing them in the first place, and we can add them. So, I appreciated that extra time to dive in and compare what we were doing and see if there were other options to improving as well. And to do that, we had ample time to dig into our data. And when you meet after school during the school year, that's not always, you're tired from the day. You wanna just get in and get going, and you don't always stop and just reflect. So, it was really nice to have that extended time to be able to stop and reflect on our data so we could really get down to the nitty-gritty of it. We were able to be very intentional about setting our goals. And again, that extra time allowed us to do that. We could have longer, more intentional conversations about our, our areas of strength, what we were already doing well and areas that needed a little bit of growth. One of the things we don't get the opportunity during the year is to share among buildings. So, it was really helpful to have all of the elementaries in the same room so we could hear each other's conversations and feedback and then learn from each other in that process. And that was something that was very productive of that day. And then, the last thing that I have is, boy, you know, it's the end of the year, and you're, you're happy that it's the end of the year at that point, and you can't wait for the next year. We've all been on that roller coaster ride of a school year. But it was really nice to stop and, and search for those evidence of our successes. And I really, really appreciated Joelle and Becky and Susan in leading that conversation of how did you achieve this goal? What were your successes? And what's the evidence that shows that? Because a lot of times, we feel like we did well, that heart data. You know, we felt like we achieved something. Or we look at this number, and this number looks really good, but we're still not quite sure why we got it. Where this time allowed us to get down and see what was the evidence that we actually did that and did it well. So, it was a very productive time. It really allowed us to be intentional in our work, and I appreciate the districts allowing that to happen. Thank you.
Will you guys say who you are? I know, I do think we know who most of you are, but...
Sorry about that. Yeah. Stacy Beatty, I'm at Jefferson. Thank you.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Leslie Bennett. I'm the principal at Grant, and...
I'm Kim Finkelstein, the CBA at Grant.
So, we're here, obviously, representing Grant and our experience on these two days of MTSS. I think you're gonna hear a lot of similarities to what Stacy said. What we took out of it mostly was just a very intentional time, use that word intentional again, to work as a team in facilitated conversations to keep us focused, and provided structure, consistency, and just time to dig in and do the work that we don't ever feel like we have the time, like Stacy said, to do well and deep. We were able to reflect on our data. I think for a lot of our conversations, I think, we talked about how it reaffirmed that we had a lot of these pieces in place. But we were able to kind of think outside the box and realign a bit, and then just put the consistency of the teams, the environment team, the instructional team, and how it's consistent now from building to building. So, it should aid in that communication and, and those conversations district-wide. And then, I really liked just that we were all there as a team, and the way that this structure is set up can provide a lot of shared leadership and collective responsibility. So, I just felt like the two days was really well worth it in order for us to refine what we're already doing so we feel like we can dig in and do even better for kids.
Hello, I'm Kim again. I'm at Grant. I'm the CBA teacher over there, and I was really excited to be invited for the opportunity to work with other educators and administrators across the district. Being frank, my initial reaction was I would not want to be in charge of running that because everybody is like, ready for summer, and I was like, oh, gosh, like, God bless you. I think, though, after the two days and being involved in the conversations and the self-reflection and collaborating with 80-plus administrators and educators across this district, I think is really a testament to how special Muscatine is and how dedicated we are. I think is really a testament to how special Musketeen is and how dedicated we are to providing like the highest quality education for all students. And I do think that self-reflection piece was really important for our team. And I think it motivated us, even though it was the end of the year, to look forward to next year. And I think there's going to be a lot of good work being done and I just appreciate the opportunity.
So, I'm David Salas. I teach fourth grade at Franklin. One of the biggest takeaways I had was that MTSS is for all the students in the general ed classroom. A lot of time, we focus on those students that are not at Benchmark. But we got to keep on remembering those who are on Benchmark and continuing to monitor their progress and then respond when needed, when we see those scores dip. It was nice to find out about the building teams and have the common language being defined for the whole district. And also, nice to find out that the environment team is having additional training in August. My, our staff enjoyed it. It was good to review the data that was still fresh in our mind, reflect on what we've done great. It helped us look at our CSET goals and talk through the goals for next year. And we understood that we need to schedule and look deeper into our data at Franklin. We focus a lot on making growth and we need to continue to have those conversations and share with other teachers what's working and what's not working. And it was really nice to be able to reflect on what was successful the last year for us and then figure out how are we going to be more successful the next school year.
Hello, I'm Tammy Turner and I'm from McKinley, the principal at McKinley Elementary. I would just like to say that I felt our teachers thought it was super beneficial to be there. Those two days like really got us focused on what it is that we need to, need to do to move forward. We collectively came up with our goals and we came up with our action steps and, and you know, the action teams and all those things. And it was a really nice time for us to get together. And then, it was great for us to also see what the other schools were doing because sometimes we see things only in our like lens. And it's nice to find out that they're, they have some different ideas or different ways to do things. So, it was really nice working with everybody in the room. I think everybody's already said that so far, but it was really nice. And especially for people like me who are new to the district, we like, just the, getting the process and all the things reiterated to us. And then, to our new staff that are in, they, they got to really focus on, you know, some of the things that we are expecting and things that we want done. And they were able to just jump in and kind of help us see where we needed to move on for next year. So, it was, it was really very beneficial and I really enjoyed it.
Hey, everyone. I'm Alex Hossbicker, one of our instructional coaches at the high school. When you hear MTSS, it sounds incredibly boring and it is. But it's so important, th, this work was so important because our school literally can't function without it. So, I was very excited those, those two days. I felt the group that we brought from the high school was also very excited. We had a lot of good conversations, a lot of passionate conversations. Some cuss words were probably thrown out, yeah, yeah, from me probably. Yeah, yeah. But I've, this is the most excited I've been about the future of the high school since I've been here. And this is going to be my eighth year. I feel like for the first time, we've had, we have really clear-cut goals and we have the infrastructure in place to support that as well. So, we've kind of done some of that rollout with our environment and instruction teams. We're going to be able to jump right into that this coming school year. And I'm really excited, excited about that. I think ultimately, one of our goals and one of the goals of MTSS is, how can we make the lives of teachers easier, make them more effective, but also allow them to impact students more? And I think what we've done, what we have planned for the high school is going to allow them to do that. Again, I, I was really proud of the high school team. I think everyone is excited about what we have planned and I'm looking forward to next year. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Fallon. I'm the Susan Clark Junior High representative. And I have to say, I was not looking forward to these two days. I just thought, oh, this is going to be so boring. But it was so well-done by Joelle, Becky, the AEA. It was very organized. There was time for professional development and learning around MTSS and debunking those myths about what it is not, that it is a system for all students. And no one's mentioned this yet, but there were drawings for prizes. So, that got everybody excited before the summer. But it was so well-done. It was very organized. We had time to speak with our coworkers, talk with other buildings in the district. We also had time for private reasoning. Most of our work, I felt like, at the middle school level, was talking about our assisting, systems in our building and how our systems can best support students in that MTSS process. So, we discussed what's currently in place, what's not in place. We discussed how can our systems work better for staff and for students and meet all students' needs. We worked on goal-setting and we spent a lot of time having conversations about who should serve on these environmental teams, these instruction teams, the BLT, student support teams, and the special education teams. And maybe who wasn't currently at the table that needs to be at the table that should have a voice. We also completed our self-assessment, our SAMI, and that was my first time doing that. And it was exciting to see that we did experience some growth. We had some very honest conversations. And we did see that we are improving and we are moving in the right direction. And I think that got us all excited about the upcoming school year. We also discussed questions about what we need for professional development and how to align learning with our current grading practices. And so, it was a wonderful two days. We're excited to meet back together as a leadership team in our building and really discuss, you know, what next year is going to look like and how we're going to meet our building goals and continue to see growth in all areas.
Hello, everyone. My name's Madison Storjahan. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Mulberry. I will say, there's no better way to spend your birthday than all day at the board office. And I know that from experience, so, just saying. But really, it was a phenomenal day, a couple days. I learned a lot and I think it was, it allowed us a lot of time to reflect on what is best for students and if we're really providing for them at our best capacity. I think my biggest takeaway was really the transparent conversation we had, we had among the elementary schools. We were able to talk about what was going really well in schools for their multi-tiered systems and also what were things that weren't going so well. In doing that, we were able to meet as a school and able to communicate like what we wanted to implement that maybe other schools were doing really well and be willing to change, knowing that those changes were maybe not something we've done in the past, but will be best practices for our future.
Hello, I'm Becky Eagerhout. I am representing Madison Elementary tonight. Going last, I literally just want to say ditto to everything that's been said. I'm like standing back there, what haven't they said that I can bring out? The, one of the things that just keep coming to mind was being able to have all of the schools together. And that time of sharing and discussing and learning about the MTSS system and how we can all do it the same, you know, similarly, the same. It's a process that will work for everyone was so super exciting. I think that's, we've been working towards that and it's coming to reality. And it's, it was just great to have teachers and all different people there learning about the same thing at the same time. And then, also time to work with your school, with your group and plan, have all your meetings planned for the year, have your groups planned. All of it was great. And of course, whoever brought up the prizes, that was, that kept your attention the whole time. So, that was phenomenal. But really, those, all kidding aside, those two days, somebody had brought up too, at the end of the year, you're so exhausted and you're thinking, I got to work two more days. But it was well worthwhile, gets the ball, oh, tongue-tied, gets the ball moving for the next year. So, thank you. We really appreciate all of that.
And thank you to our teachers and our principals for, for being here again. You guys made the two days worthwhile. So, you might be wondering, well, that was all great, so now what do we do? Well, like we kind of talked about, on August sixteenth, that is the first day back for all staff. And so, after our super in-service, all staff will go back to their buildings. And so, our building, our teams that were here on the, on the third and fourth will have a time to share what they did those two days. And there are a slideshow that's going to be available for them. So, they'll be able to share all of what they talked about and next steps for their building on August sixteen. On August fifth, we have a principals' meeting. So, we will be meeting as a principal team to ensure that each building has their teams in place. They're ready to go at the start of the school year. And just maybe process those two days as an administrative team. We will continue to meet throughout the school year in redefining and sharing about student support teams in that process. And then, obviously, we will check in with building teams throughout the school year as well. So, that is what happened on June third and fourth.
I got a, I got a question for you. With the five teams, how, what is the membership of those teams going to look like? How, how many members, staff members going to be on each team? Will there be overlap or not? Or you encourage, hopefully, to have some of the outliers to get in, involved?
Yeah, and this was kind of, I'm looking at my principals. This is, my guess would be some conversations that happened at the table. When we look at an instruction team, who should be at the table? And, you know, for Joelle and I to say, you need five people, well, you might not need five people. You might need more than five. And so, we let teams, the buildings, determine who should be at the table. We do have some required members. So, like on our SST teams, our school counselor, our CBA lead. Our instruction team, our building instructional coaches lead that on environment, our CBA lead. So, we do have some dedicated spots. But it was up to the school teams to determine, looking at their staff, looking at the passions that they have, and them determining as a team who needs to be on these teams.
I would say to add to that, we, shared leadership is important and that we do want voices from all teachers in the building. You know, with that said, I think there are times where it works for teachers to be on a team. And then, there are some times in a teacher's life, it just doesn't right because they have other things going on. So, we, you know, want to be cognizant of, you know, teachers' personal lives and what they can devote. But we also really want to ensure that we do have shared leadership and voice across all of our buildings. And that gives an opportunity for teachers to be on different teams that they have passion about. So, that was our goal.
First of all, thank you because I know this has been a long time coming, that you guys have worked on this in so many different steps and ways to get here. And I know that there was a point of time when there were those that didn't necessarily believe there was a communication that was going along with your steps and stuff. But hearing tonight, what I heard was communication, communication. You know, things like that were being said. And I wrote down what Stacy said about that's sharing among the buildings. And I kind of had to think about that for a moment because I guess I hadn't really thought about that, that is something that normally is not done. And so, I think that is something that hopefully you'll be able to build upon and continuing some kind of way to do it, if it's through this or some other way, just to make sure that everybody feels that that communication is happening for them. Thank you.
I'll echo a little bit of what everyone has said too. And I think Alex said it when he was talking, this is one of the most important pieces for the buildings and how they function and really taking some of it, giving power back to teachers a little bit. We've talked about MTSS a lot over the last, I don't know, like six to eight months. And I think it was, it's been frustrating at times and we've been like, why isn't this in people's hands? And why aren't we using it uniformly? Of course, there's a process and it takes time, and we know now. But I think it's, the words that they said, I kind of thought, pulled some of them out like Karen too. And just being able to reflect, I think we said that this is all students. I'm not sure who said that, but you know, it's who we think of as supports isn't just the kids that are not meeting Benchmark, it's everyone. And then, the unity and being uniform across the district, conversing across buildings, collaboration. But my favorites were the hope and the growth and then feeling prepared to go into the next year. And I think we've been all anxiously waiting for that piece. And that's where the frustration has come out. And so, it's really exciting to see it all come together. And the timing was probably perfect at the end of the year, even if nobody wanted to come back for it. But I'm really excited about that. And I especially loved that as I thumbed through this really quickly, I recognized some of the charts and the language of tools that you guys are already utilizing. So, it didn't feel like a waste or like you had to learn something new. It probably just all made sense. And you're like, yes. So, I really liked to see that and excited to see it keep playing out.
I would just like to say, I feel like sometimes I just get negative response, but I got a lot of positive feedback from staff that had attended this. How was this committee, the June third and fourth, how was that group? Was it voluntary, was it, did you appoint people for that?
So. So, when we shared with principals that we were going to have an MTSS strategic planning event, and that's kind of how we teed it up, like yay.
Everybody volunteered.
And we kind of said, hey, you need to look at your building. You need to have the voices at the table that you know will be beneficial for these two days. Because there could be some hard conversations, there could be some fun conversations and, you know, maybe, you know, some, a little bit of vulnerability. So, you determine who you want at your table that can talk about buildings. And so, we let principals determine who and how and.
I think it was people that will champion the work, but also be transparent and ask the questions. Because we don't want everybody just to be like, yes, whatever you say. Like, we want people to push back and challenge things and to, you know, like they said, we, we had some hard conversations. We had time for each person to reflect individually. So, like, those were really the people that we wanted there. At the same time, we know we have a lot more staff out there and we want to engage them in this process and include them as well. So, that's our next steps, but for that.
I mean, I think it's really important to have people that challenge and then solve those challenges or find the right path. Will this same group get together again yet this year? The June third and fourth group?
We'll do a check-in with the building teams. Actually, that was one of our feedback. We did give them a survey. And at the end of these two days, to give us feedback on what they would like to see. And overwhelmingly, the feedback came back that they do want to meet back again. They do want us, you know, to be involved and to work with their buildings, not just like Becky and I, but just like the whole groups.
And better prizes.
Yeah, yeah. Prizes are always important. But, but yeah, we'll continue to work on, work with these teams. And then, even as principals, we'll continue to keep working through refining processes as well.
I just think what's a positive outcomes from this meeting, it'd be nice to do it quarterly or semester.
Well, and I think our participant packet workbook playbook, we called it lots of things. I think this is a good tool for, because as you know, we onboard new teachers and new administrators, you know, throughout the year. It's not just once a time, we're hiring mid-year. So, these are tools that they can use in onboarding any new staff to their building. And it gives them a reference to go back to as well.
Well, and going back to the next steps to make sure they're happening. And I just, I, I think it's great. I don't want it to just be dropped, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, I would like.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I would, I would like to say thank you, first of all. And I can say that, at least I can speak for myself, I felt the passion from each one of you who spoke about this process. And that's great. You know, I, I wrote this down. You know, when, when people start using intentional work, intentional time, those vocabularies means a lot to those of us who are in education. So, thank you, Alex. Don't feel bad because I have been on the board for nine years. And I can say that tonight, that this is the best MTSS report that I ever heard so far in my nine years. So, thank you all to the, to your hard work. So thank you all to the, to your hard work. I have just a quick question. Every building will have all these teams, they will be working together to achieve and reach the goal. But is, like, is there a way that teams also from all these buildings that can communicate with each other and work together at some point in time?
I think one of the challenges that they heard is finding the time to bring everybody together, but we did hear that that was important to them, based on our feedback. So we will find time throughout the school year, we'll have scheduled meetings for them. And then always, you know, I, I do think one positive thing is every single building is so supportive of other buildings, and that's one thing I feel very proud about of our school district, is that regardless of what school you attend, or what principal you are, there's so much support for one another. So yes, we'll continue to support all of our buildings and all of our teams, and give them time to meet.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clint?
You know, I always like to end with some comments as well, so I, I certainly will do that. We've spent a lot of time on these things across the district, but at this board table, right? I hope as you look at this packet, there are documents in there that you recognize, because we've spent time on it, and we spend time on it because it is really important, right? This is some of the most important things we'll do. But I, I want to talk about the group that was here, those 80 people. Many of you are out here in the crowd tonight. So John, remember when you were trying to start this meeting, and it was really kind of loud out here, a lot of people talking? Imagine that times 10, right? Here's what I can tell you about this group. Transitions were difficult, right? But that's because they were really digging in, having great conversations, there was a lot of passion. There was time built into it. You know, Joelle, Becky, and Susan Downs did a great job, like, pulling all of this together and planning it out. So there was learning work, and then there was time to work. And you could feel in the room, they want to get to work. So there's this, like, pull to like, okay, I know you're trying to teach me, so I gotta learn this, but I want to work. And that was exciting, right? There was, there was definitely a lot of passion in there. And I think another thing, during breaks, people were mingling, getting together, there's laughter, they were having it. You know, it wasn't like, at a break, phew, this place got empty, because nobody wanted to be around here anymore. They didn't, they were having a lot of fun. And then ultimately, they asked for more. That's another sign that things were going really well. They want to do this, they want to continue to do this again. So a lot of planning went into this, and I think we do need to continue to provide that check-in time, and then we gotta do it again next year, right? So this is building work, it's ongoing process. And then collectively, the way I would just summarize this, the time was spent collectively connecting the dots, and then really aligning the work and setting the stage for the next level of work. And that has to be an ongoing process. So I just appreciate all the time spent. And then when it was done, it was like, now we need to get this, these groups, this, this learning in front of you, so you can see and hear from them, kind of the power of those couple of days. Again, right away at the, at the first part of summer, but the room was full, and people were here and they stayed here. And again, credit to, to everyone for the work that they did, so, thank you all.
I think we'll see this reflected on our daily desire experiences, because this is where people wanted to feel heard, this is in all of those staff opportunities.
And the other piece we haven't talked about yet is the District Environment Committee, and a lot of the work that happened on those days aligned with the work that happened on June 3rd and 4th. Now, there, that group met on the, what was it, the 16th? We had that meeting. And so we'll be bringing some of those folks to you in August to present on that. And again, you should hear, a lot of the, the things that happened on those days are the things that people want, right? It's a lot of the same conversations. So everything is, is moving in the right direction. Again, it's about that consistency, it's about collaboration and communication.
For me, with, with every presentation we've seen on MTSS, you can just see it building, and the coordination, getting together, and get the schools on the same page as it goes on, so we're encouraged.
And I still think we'll have, I mean, we still have work to do, like, it's not a finished product, and I think that's also really important to remember, because it is a process. And so as we continue, you know, like Clint said, we're gonna keep coming back to this, keep working on it. It's not 100% perfect everywhere, but I think that's part of the, you know, something that's positive that comes out of it is that reflection and that ability to collaborate, so.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Well, and like, I mean, we had great three presentations tonight, so thank you all, thank you. So moving forward with our agenda, we move into the superintendent updates, please.
So just a, a few things to update you on since June. One, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to Ankeny, to the Iowa Association of Agricultural Educators. And so all of our ag teachers were there, Dave Tomitich, Sam Paul, Ashley Weeby, Alexa Kubes, and our very new hire, she hasn't even started working, she's just been hired, but she came along, Daylin Garrett, they were all present there as well. And again, this is their kind of annual conference, where they're doing their learning through the day. And at the last banquet, they do awards, and the Muscatine Community School District was the Ag Program of the Year, which was really exciting, it's a great honor. They do such a tremendous job. However, I'm told this is the first time they've won that award. So as, as, I think it's the, the largest ag program in the state. You look at what they do at a local, state, and national level in terms of success, it's just incredible what opportunities our kids have.
That they were getting there?
They were hinted, so there was a, an email that went out, like, we've been told we should probably make sure we're there and invite, you know, administrators to go as well. So they had a pretty good idea it was gonna happen, but they had to keep it quiet for a little while. Now, the next phase is Region 3. So because they were the Iowa selection, they move on to Region 3, which is like Nebraska and Minnesota and several other states, so. And then there's a process that they'll go through, so we'll find out if our program kind of moves to that next level. I certainly believe it should, because it's, it's worth, worthy of that. But again, just credit to our, our teachers who've really continued to just take a great program and continue to grow and, and move it forward, so wanted to mention that as well. I had the opportunity also a couple of weeks ago to meet again with Governor Reynolds. She held another meeting with superintendents, this time in Luiza-Muscatine, and really to kind of continue to listen to some of the things that, you know, we've been struggling with, some of the legislative pieces, and also talk about what are some things coming up that they can continue to take a look at. So we spent time talking about the teacher salary legislation and some of the impacts on that. And that led into some conversations about special ed certifications. That's one of the areas we really struggle to get people hired. And just the way Iowa lays out the certifications is a little frustrating in that, you know, you, you can't be a strat 1 unless you have that certification, and you, you've got to be certified for strat 2, and if you're strat 2, you can't, unless you're, you gotta be certified in both, right? And that makes it a lot more challenging. And so those were pieces that she really wrote down and, and says she wants to take a look at and take back to her team. We spent some time on attendance and chronic absenteeism and some of the work that they did there, and I certainly shared my thanks and some of the legislation that supports the work we've been doing. I've, I've presented some of our, just past year's improvements. I think at the last board meeting, we talked about the, in, the, the decrease from 33% to, it was 14 or 15% is 900 students. And in the meantime, our tech department's done some more. I've asked them to kind of work through some of those numbers to put it in better perspective. So if you take, if you think of all of our students, on average, each student now in our district attends five more days of school. It's a week of school that they're attending more now than they did three years ago. It's really powerful, right? And then you, you start doing that year after year after year, and that really adds up. So there's been a ton of work to get that done. And again, I know it hasn't been easy, and, and, and parents will call and be upset, but the goal is to get kids to school, and we're getting them there. So being able to talk to the governor about that and, and talk about some of the work we've done, I think was, was really important. There was some conversation about a unified student information system. We use Power School. All districts, you know, pick what works for them. There's been some conversations, should the state say, everyone's gonna use this system, right? And that would make data reporting easier. In our conversations with the governor, we made it really clear that as long as you stay with Power School, we're fine, if you choose anything else. Because there are so many things built around that, it's not, like, your HR system and your finance system, and there's just so many pieces that are connected, it's not an easy thing. Plus, it's a huge lift for training and professional development for staff, anytime you change that. So it's not an easy thing, and it would take a long runway to really get us there. So, you know, we said again, go slow, but if you do Power School, we're good. We also talked about, shared, they changed the application systems that we use across the state. Eliminate, we used to have Teach Iowa, kind of where all the jobs would go, and, and then it went, where do we go now?
Workforce Development.
Workforce Development. And it's just not very user-friendly. And so they're gonna go back to Teach Iowa, and she made the comment that they've heard that loud and clear, that it's not, it's not good. And so we'll see some, I think we'll see some improvements there. And then we spent some time talking about cell phone policy, and, you know, the governor was really interested to hear if a statewide legislation on that would be helpful. And I think the, the vast consensus of that room is, yes, it would. To have some consistency across the board, it also, it also gives you a little more. So one of the pieces you always deal with is just implementation and ensuring all staff are, are following the procedure, right? Having it as a state law also gives you a little bit of, of leverage in saying, hey, you gotta do this, it's a state law. Now, we know, I think what they're seeing across the state is where there are other places where there's pushback, it's from parents. And again, I think there'd be some situations where, and we have students on IEPs and 504s that need to have their phones with them, we'd have to work through some of those processes. But I would, I would not be surprised if the next legislative session has at least some very strong conversations about a statewide law around this, which, again, I, I certainly would be supportive of. I did, one of my comments to the governor is, you know, the last couple of years, there's been a lot focused on public schools, and a lot of big changes, big legislation. And I said, I really hope you give us some time to just get our arms around the changes that we have. Like, let's catch our breath, really focus on it, because what I want to get back to is not focusing on what new state law has been passed that now we have to, like, let's just get back to focusing on teaching in the classroom. Give us some space to do this and do it well, and focus back on that. And, and at least, I, I got, every time I've met with her in this past year, that's the third time since this winter, she did give me the impression that she was listening, and she appreciated those conversations. And so I, I appreciated her being, being there to do that, and then we'll kind of see where it goes from there. Shortly after I got back, I did get a email from Director McKenzie Snow. She's the Director of Education now at the Department of Ed for the state, and have been invited to participate in a, a working group on attendance for the state. And again, given some of the great work that's been done here, I said I would be happy to help out with that. So I think those conversations have been good. We talked about the District Environment Committee a little bit connected to that last presentation. We had a really good two hours of working together. And so we'll, we'll bring some of that work back to you in August and bring some of those folks to talk to you, because I think it helps you to hear from them, not just from us, around those things. But I thi, I think people felt good about the time we spent there, and I think you'll see some of the connections between that work and a lot of the other work that's been going on. So we're excited about that. And then the last thing, just today, at Rotary, we had our student scholars who were given Rotary scholarships. And so we had Parker Green there, Creed Berkoffer, Kate Schlebeen, and Sawyer Zek, great students, all going kind of in different places and different things, but you can tell they're, they're gonna do great things. And again, some are going to MCC, some are going on to state schools. You know, they're, they're talking about a variety of positions, but really some outstanding kids, and it continues to just show what, what great opportunities our kids have here in this district and in this community, and the great things that they do, so. Just want to share that with you tonight.
Thank you, Clint. Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment about with the Rotary too, and that was, one of them even talked about becoming a teacher. And so we thought that that was quite special, you know, to hear that. But what was really good about it from like how Clint has said that each and every one of them, it wasn't like they were shy up there to be able to talk to us, were they, you know, Lindsey? You know, they really had a voice, and they were making sure that they, they told us what their, think their expect, think their expectations are coming up in the next couple of years, so, thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward with our agenda, we move into action, possible action item. The following items are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a director's request, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. The items are, 1 minutes, 2 bills and claims, 3 employment recommendations, 4 2024-25 hourly employee handbook, 5 2024-25 MEA employee handbook, 6 2024-25 subteacher, subnurse handbook, 7 2024-25 administrators, directors certified handbook, 8 third and final reading on policies, 9 policies no minimum required by law. What are the wishes of the Board? So we have a motion, and a second, any discussion?
John, I didn't hear who said the motion.
I said so moved.
Okay, thank you.
And seconded by Lindsey.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carried. That takes us to item K in our agenda, which is to have a motion to approve the 2024 to 2029 district developed service delivery plan for special education service. What are the wishes of the Board?
I make motion to approve the 2024 to 2029 district developed service delivery plan for special education services.
So we have a motion, any second? So we have a motion, any second, any discussion?
Clint, is this new, this came out of the, I feel like this is the first time I've read this.
Well, it, it gets approved every five years.
Oh, that would, it is the first time I've read it.
It'll come back in five more years again.
Okay.
They'll probably say, this is the first time we've seen this.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the 2024-2029 district developed service delivery plan for special education services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carried. Next item is to have a motion to approve the property casualty insurance with employer's mutual casualty EMC in the amount of $861,172, and United Heartland for Workers COM in the amount of $319,933. What are the wishes of the Board?
Cooney and so moved.
So we have a motion, and a second, any discussion or any questions? No, okay. All those in favor of approving the property casualty insurance with employer's mutual casualty EMC in the amount of $861,172, and United Heartlands for Workers COM in the amount... dollars, and United Heartlands for workers come in the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay, thank you, motion carried. So, the next item is to approve the award of contract for the MCSD AEA controlled entrance project to valley commercial construction in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. Change order over twenty-five dollar, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand dollars will be approved by the Board. What are the wishes of the Board?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the award of contract for the MCSD AEA controlled entrance project to valley commercial construction in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars, change order over twenty-five thousand dollars will be approved by the Board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion carried, thank you. So, with that, we move into our discussion and information item of our agenda, and the first item, item A, Muscatine High School Activities Department dedication. And I see Mike is already approaching the podium, and we have two items under that. Mike, would you like to?
Yeah, do you want me to talk about them one at a time, or together?
You can talk about one at a time in case if they have questions, and then we move to the second one.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
If you don't, Mike Henson, I'm the activities director up at the high school. And I have two motions for the Board to consider. The first here is to rename, or to actually name, name the record board that sits in the swimming pool after retired coach Judd Anderson. You all have the notation I sent you, so I'm not going to reread that. But for those that don't know, Judd was a coach here for sixty years. You could see his record there of over four hundred and forty wins, which is tough to do when you do ten to twelve matches a year. It takes a lot of years to add up to that. And this, we had a committee get together and talk about this, and the scoreboard, we talked about the scoreboard, we talked about the record board, and it was determined, Judd had a passion for that record board. He was making sure that everything was up to date every year, down to the last detail. And so, we thought it was very fitting that that's what we look at doing in his honor. So, that's the general gist of that. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question?
Just that it's very well deserved for Judd, and he had a, he had a great retirement party, I guess, a couple of weekends ago. I was second line, fortunately, otherwise, when I got done talking to him, I turned around, there was eighty people behind me. So, I was fortunate to be second line, so, but it's a very well deserved.
And I want to say that I remember Judd quite well, because he tried to recruit me after he recruited my brothers. And let's just say that I told him, I says, that's punishment taken in doing all of that with you. You have my brothers, you could take that. And my brothers went to state. They really, really loved the sport, and Judd made it really well for everybody to want to do it and continue with it. So, this is a well, this is something that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Can we move to the second item unless there is still any question about the first one?
Okay, second item is a request. Once again, a committee was put together after some requests from community members to consider the naming of our tennis courts. And the request is to move, name it after Ron Kaiser. Again, you can see his bio in there, but Ron Kaiser was the head coach here at Muscatine for forty-seven years. So, between my two requests, we have a hundred and seven years of coaching experience that we're looking at here. So, again, a very passionate about musky sports, probably another one I think is well deserved. There, his son came and spoke to our group and gave us a little more background, also is going to be leading the charge to do some initial fundraising for us as well to help offset some of the costs. And as, because part of this project, as Mr. Nienhaus knows, is that we're going to be looking at eventually trying to replace the tennis courts on there. And so, the actual timing of this, right now, as of this moment, is to be in conjunction with the new, when we rebuild the tennis courts, resurface them, whatever that ends up looking like, doing at that point in time is when we'll actually have the ceremony for that one.
Another, another well deserved honor for Ron, after teaching the district for forty years, and then continuing to coach for another eighteen years after that, that's very commendable.
I have a comment, a question, I'm not sure this is the right, but, and nothing to diminish any of these coaches, they've done a fantastic job. They were all there when I was in high school. And, but I, I've had concerns from the public about, actually several people, about how these committees are made to determine who we're going to name things after. Is there a process for that? Is it made public that anybody can have input, I guess, is?
The process we've done to-
Just to clarify, because they've asked me, and I put it out there.
Yeah, so the process is based on the board policy that says a committee will be formed, and how we've done that is typically, it's been people that have been involved in those areas, boosters and different people who've been involved in, in the sport.
So, if we have people in the public that would like to have someone recognize, they approach you first?
There's a few different ways that can be done. One is myself, any member of the administration team, and we get the official notice, and then we start the process from there.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to mention also that Mr. Kaiser was a phenomenal ping pong player.
I would, you know, Ken, I'm glad that you brought-
And jump rope.
I'm very happy that you did mention that. I had the honor to meet his son and sit down and most probably chat with him for over an hour. And, and really, when you hear the story of Coach Ron Kaiser from even his son, I mean, it's really an amazing story. I mean, our district, if you think about it, had really a history of great people who really worked and gave a good number of years of their life, and would run forty-seven years to our district, to our students, and so on. And I think it's well deserving to honor both Judd, Judd Anderson and Ron Kaiser. The stories are amazing and very moving also when you hear that. So, thanks for bringing up this two names now. Yes, thank you also, Kim, for asking about the process. It's important to have, you know, that clear process too. So, my question is, what's next?
In the case of Ron, well, I've talked about in the case of Ron Kaiser, the kind of the timeline there. In the case of Judd Anderson, we are, the, in the ideal world, we're going to line it up with the inauguration of our new scoreboard, that'll be coming in. So, January ninth is the date we're looking at to do that, so we can do it all on one night and one ceremony. The tipping point on there, what may change things there is working with Judd's schedule as well, because I know he's now, now that he's in retirement, he's using his time to get up to his cabin up in Minnesota and do some traveling. So, we're going to coordinate with him too as to when would be the best time to get that done. But the tentative date is January ninth.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, great presentations. Thank you, Mike. So, the second item under discussion and information is the item B, first reading of policies, five oh one point five, elementary school transfers. Any question about that?
Yes. Pardon me. Volunteer transfer requests are considered, and then it goes into it, but what I'm wondering is the reasoning when it says the district will not consider voluntary transfers when a student has poor attendance, is under suspension, or is not in good standing at their current school building, which could be part of the reason why they're having the problem, because that school is not giving them what they need? I guess I need to kind of understand why that-
If a student is struggling to attend their neighborhood school, and now you move them to a school where they have to provide their own transportation to get there, the likelihood that they're going to actually show up consistently is not very good. So, that piece is if they're not in good attendance, or if they've been, you know, a significant, you know, behavior issue, they may not be granted. That doesn't mean we won't, they're just, we may not. We'll have to, we look at each case individually. It also means when they get there, if they're having problems, they may have to go back, right? And we try to, we've tried to clarify that in the policy.
Any other questions? And remember, it's still the first reading, we still have to go through two more readings. So, if you have any question or any idea, please make sure you connect with Daphne and ask those questions. Any more questions before we move forward to the next item? Okay, item C, second reading of policy five oh three point seven, student complaints and grievance. Any question? Again, as we mentioned, if you see anything and you would like to communicate with Daphne, please do so before it comes to as a term reading and we have to approve or not. Thank you. So, item D, review administration regulations and electronic forms, four oh one point R1, equal employment opportunity administrative regulations, four oh two point one E1, equal employment opportunity complaint form, five oh two point three R1, student activity program, good conduct, again, administrative regulations, and five oh one point five R1, elementary school transfer administrative regulations. Any question?
Is it kind of redundant having the same thing?
Danny, do you have a question?
No.
No? Okay, I'm-
I figured it out.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure, because we don't want to keep moving in case of, if you have a question. Anybody else? Okay, so, item E, second reading of the twenty twenty-four twenty-five student handbook. Any question? Okay, so, again, a final reminder, if you have any question, please make sure you communicate with Daphne in between the meetings. Next item on our agenda is the announcements, meetings, and events. The first one is no food pantry in July. Then, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, we have a school board work session at nine AM here at the Muscatine Community School District Administration Center on twenty-nine hundred Mulberry Avenue. August sixth, twenty twenty-four, River Bend mobile food pantry, four to five thirty PM at the administration center here at the Muscatine Community School District on Mulberry Avenue. August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, school board community conversations, five thirty at the administration center on the twenty-nine hundred Mulberry Avenue. And that's a reminder again, because we didn't have the community conversation in the month of June and July, so we go back to that in August. August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular board meeting at six fifteen here at the admin center on twenty-nine hundred Mulberry Avenue. August fourteen fifty, August fourteen and fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Muskee University, new teachers at the admin center here, twenty-nine hundred Mulberry Avenue. And the last item is August sixteen, twenty twenty-four, old staff in service at the Muscatine High School, twenty-seven oh five Sierra Streets at eight thirty. But also, would like to remind everybody that between seven and eight on August sixteen, we'll have the breakfast for old staff at the Muscatine High School. And from eight to eight thirty, also at the high school, the staff picture on the football field. Any other items that anyone would like to share?
Yeah, I have a couple. You know, the summer seasons are winding down. Our baseball team's playing at North Scott on Friday at seven o'clock, and our softball team will play at home on July thirteenth on Saturday at seven o'clock. So, we got a home game there, get to show off our new facility. And we play, we'll play the winner of-
Bedendorf and Hempstead.
Okay, Bedendorf and Hempstead. So, if you get out there and support each, each team, you have to travel to North Scott if you go to baseball and support the girls at home.
Thank you, Danny, for sharing this. Anybody else would like to share any other news? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I don't make that motion.
So, we have, we have a motion, and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Good, good night, everybody.